Call this meeting to order. All those willing to approve the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to your boy, and your mother, your sister, and to the all-powerful United States of America, our nation, our God, we will live through with liberty and justice for all. Everybody like that? Welcome to the March 25th PLS School Board. We will move on to item number three, approval of the agenda. We have 3.1 additions of 3.1 then, letter of resignation for heavy randomness, and 3.1, point two, retirement letter from Pam Cruz, non-alimentary music teacher. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda with it? I need to approve the directions to... Stop and move. Third second.
Second.
Got a motion from hands in a second by Brad to approve the agenda with three additions and additions as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Agenda passes. Moving on to number three, the public forum. We'll move on to number five, presentation. Five point two, pipe stone with baseball, and Shane Lampkin. Welcome Shane.
I've sent you guys something, there's more discussion points than I'm going to discuss at this meeting, but obviously we're here, I'm happy to have pipe stone with baseball. We have got some funds secured that we'd like to see the ground facility continue to be improved. Our intent is to install a four-foot fence around the playground area. We already proved that this is still a school, school ground at this time. We're also in an interesting situation. We'd like to build a fence, but we also don't have the public forum to manage with the impending renovation of the school. So, um, we've found the building of the fence can be powered, and then this will also be discussed on, for example, the public forum. We had the funds ready to put the fence up, but I think you guys can understand, we don't want it installed if the field's going to disappear with the school. So, um, estimated cost of the fence at this time is about $2,000. There's an additional cost of $5,000 if we have the campus fence team coming and selling. We're hoping that we can seek volunteers and local contractors to donate some time and then sell it on our own, or save some cash. That's basically my current presentation. We're going to build a fence, um, we're going to do the power to that, and I guess as a step is, the public thing, we think we'll go with working together with the school and senior to make sure that the ground field facility is going to stay there. Any other questions at that point?
I think we're good.
I think it's a fair opposition to a donation from the baseball association for pets. Alright. Why do you accept the donation? It kind of drink or something.
Thank you.
So we're going to do nothing down.
Yeah, I'd say we probably don't have the reaction until after the renovation.
It's a process, or the hearing, which is step one, and then step two is the next day. So, um, that's, that's kind of where things are at. But they'll help make the presentation. We've already been approached by the city with the communication, uh, stating very interested in ground field, um, on the time comes, we will have to consider that.
Alright, we will move on to item number six, the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Chrissy with the second. Katie with the second. Any discussion? Who none, others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Others opposed, say no. Motion closed. Moving on to item number seven, the financials. Seven point one, review of elementary building budget due to date. This is another action item. Do you have any thoughts for us, Jackie?
Not really. Basically what this is, is I compare my accounting system, and then I contact the crosshair and so we make sure that our numbers are the same, then make sure it applies off of the building bond bank account. This is a summary of what we asked. To date, we're at 21.2 million that's been spent of the 29.85 million.
Any more questions? We will move on to seven point one, point two, approve treasuries report for elementary building down. I missed that one. Seven point one, point one, review of elementary building downs.
We should look at those toward 1.29.
Any questions right now? Alright, we will go on to seven point one, point two, approve the treasuries report for elementary building down. This is an action item. Do you have a motion to approve the treasuries report for the elementary building down?
Second.
Second. Katie, you're in place? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the treasury report for the elementary building down, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion closed. Moving on to seven point two, review of budget due to date. Jackie?
It appears that we're in line at 62% spent to date. Actually, at this time, we're at 65%. Under one budget transfer just between a small one between some technology object codes, but other than that, it is what it is.
I think for the next few months, you're gonna, it was about now when we close down and went to distance learning, so we will see some changes probably in the budget we have to pay for those as we, as we did, save some money last year. Right now, we're on track.
Any other questions? Alright, we will move on to seven point three, approve treasuries report for February 2021. Jackie?
Just not know what to say about these. This is basically, I do all the big works and I tie it out, yeah, tie it out to the cash on my, same far as on my accounting records is basically making sure everything's where it's supposed to be.
Any other questions, Jackie? Alright, we will look for a motion to approve the treasury report for February 2021.
Second.
Brad and Chrissy? Any discussion? Who none, others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Others opposed, say a sign. Passes. Moving on to seven point four, approve regular bills for March 2021. Any discussion on the bills? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular bills. Can you... Hands.
Second.
Go on. Any discussion? Who none, others in favor of approving the regular bills for March 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Others opposed, say a sign. Motion closed. Moving on to seven point five, approve high school activity bills for March 2021. Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Chrissy? Any discussion? Who none, others in favor of approving high school activity bills for March 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Others opposed, say a sign. Passes. Moving on to item number eight, board friend slash information, B point one, board reports and updates. Anybody have updates from community meetings?
We have a facility, oh no, yeah, facilities meeting. Maintenance of facility, and the baseball people can talk to us about the fence, and they also talk to us about adding a sidewalk between the tennis courts and the new laboratories and stuff.
Concessions.
Yeah, concessions. So, they were gonna look into pricing, just because we were concerned about how much it was gonna cost to go down through there and get back to us with some of that. They were willing to pay for some of it, it sounded like, and maybe out of it, I guess, depending on how much it was.
Well, they wanted us to pay for some.
Yeah. Right. They didn't really want it, so.
They just said, made logical sense that the tennis courts could have access to the bathrooms over there for new facilities and stuff. But we're in a long way past it, and it's a pretty big ditch there, so.
Thinking.
Might get to be a little bit, but we'll continue to talk with them.
It's good to have an active association like that that wants to help out with things like that.
Any other updates?
Negotiations met with the teachers to discuss the survey results, so let, let be presented at the open session afterward. Facility steering met, and looked at kind of the pricing on the loading dock. So, we're, right now, with the contingency though, we're gonna wait because, um, we just gotta make sure that we have contingency for the work that will be done, kitchen, or mess in the ways when they do that, where anytime they tear into a building, that's where they, where they, if something comes out, so. Like, we've got about 190,000 left in contingency, so we're just gonna kind of wait to see if that comes in. And we're also gonna get a more accurate, um, mill and overlay done, so we'll be out next week, and we'll be taking a look at our site, and what needs to be done, because we wanna do, uh, other type of, uh, interviews, the library, any rooms that we've had, um, so, when we come out here, everything will look nice and, and it'll be alright.
You see we still have a problem with water. Wait, or you turn, you come, you come in and you turn, you go to the side, or straight ahead? It was under, a couple of times I come out here, it's all on the water there. Is there a way that we can get drainage away from that?
Oh, there is a big pile of snow they put that sits in the way of where the water wants to go. Oh, in years, we've had them push it out further, but this time it was a saw.
Wow, I suppose.
So, I think that part's when we get that big pile away from it, but it kind of has to sit there. I mean, pretty much.
Well, yeah, you understand, definitely.
I think that's a good.
Alright, we move on to number nine, administrators report, nine point one, superminence board report.
Uh, moment is up. Two of us, well, two that we lost over, um, February, January, back now, March, so we're back to that number where we're at. Uh, I'd also just say legislatively, um, you know, the legislature's working, the budget forecast has come in better, so, uh, both the House and the Senate and the Governor have money for education, so it looks like the two and two will be there, uh, and then there's a lot of other money for summer schools and most types of things. Uh, it sounds like the planning enrollment funding, uh, is also there. Right now, there's a debate of everybody gets a per pupil amount, or, uh, they give it to the schools who have the most significant gift of loss, and the school districts who haven't had loss, like the, everybody gets the same, and schools like us who've lost, they'd like to see us get the more reimbursement for the part of enrollment, but it's, uh, it's, uh, but, and we all, I think financially, it sounds like, well, things are coming together pretty well with the legislature, so, but we won't go and tell them where all that's at, so. That's all I have.
Chris, any other questions? Any questions for Kevin? Alright, we, uh, we'll move on to nine point two, principals board report. We'll start with Greg.
Hello, everyone. A few things going on in the middle of high school. First of all, we are looking at a hybrid model learning change coming after Easter, so high school is the last, um, change that needs to be made, and based on our numbers and cases, I feel very confident that we can move to, um, all day in-person running with our high school, so we're intending to do that starting April 6th. So I think that's a positive thing going on, and then that brings us K-12, all in person. At some point tonight, I would like to recommend that our seniors' last day be May 11th, that's a Tuesday, and that's consistent with what we do on a yearly basis, knowing that graduation is on Sunday the 16th, to be ready and to have all the things necessary. We just need approval from the board tonight, so I recommend the L one as, uh, the last day, and we'll do a little send out, have a little fun with them on the last, on the official last day. That is, um, action, okay, so. Sorry, I'm looking down for them. What we look at this time of year, uh, the two big things, prom graduation, I've been working with the after-prom group, and also a lot of prom advisors, and we're gonna meet with our students next week, so we've been layering some things down, trying to figure out how best to conduct the prom, and we'll be sharing information with students, uh, probably next Thursday, before we get to the Easter break, so that they know what's, what's going, and then we'll share that out with, uh, parents as well. Graduation, we're, uh, looking at preparation for that, and we're very confident that we can pull that in a gymnasium, and have people attend, uh, we're working on the numbers, looking at the new guidance from the state regarding venues, so we're gonna have some information for our students in the near future regarding how that's gonna go in the tent, but I feel like we can get close to normal in terms of how we conduct our graduation program, and the main thing is how many, how many people can we have come in, and what does that look like, and then enter the building into the gymnasium. And then the last thing, one, we're going through the registration process, looking at, uh, what we do with our students next year, so that's, uh, our counselors have been going through, kind of looked at three phases, really working on student interest and creating schedules that are student-centric, and looking at both longer blocks and year-round, or year-long classes, I should say. So, we're putting that together, and working with the teachers on those things, and we've got some exciting things coming. Really interested to see what our kids really want out of, especially with the opportunities, and we feel like we can accommodate a lot of those desires for our students, and that that, uh, doing so, having a student-centric, um, registration scheduling process that, uh, our kids are more into with school overall. So, that's what we're working on, and we'll continue that, uh, I guess in like two to three weeks, to officially kind of wrap that up, but it's been, it's been very good with the counselors, and I've been meeting regularly to put these, this process together, so. Those are the things that I have for you, man. Any other questions for me?
Do the teachers like the block schedule? I mean, do they, they, do they feel like their kids are getting enough out of it? Do they feel like it's efficient?
You know, it's a mix. I think some teachers roll with it better than others. What I do here frequently is, when you, uh, when you look at a block, they were on two days in-person, then three, or four, so several have said it's really hard to judge where I would be with all in-person learning. So I think several have taken that viewpoint of, you know, it might have been maybe not the best to start, and that's a big change, we all knew that.
Yep.
But I think they're willing to take a longer look at it to see can this really work out as that sort of play out. So, and I want to be clear, I mean, schedules, uh, schedules are schedules. They only increase student achievement in and of themselves. Uh, it's really what we do with the schedule that we have, and how we use that from an instruction standpoint, and of course, offering standpoint, and I think when we look at, so when I-62 is centric, and we're looking at where those opportunities, we know we have required courses that where the state says you have to do this, and our school says you have to do this, but where are those elective opportunities that we haven't been able to offer in years past, uh, because we're limited to six or seven classes a day. So, that's what we're working hard at, trying to make that happen, and, uh, like I said, hopefully increase the student engagement, uh, and I do have, uh, quite a few teachers who are like, oh, I can actually offer this class, and, you know, we see some of those that, plus they're a little more popular, elective-wise, where we can offer them a frequent bit, so try to give more kids, uh, access to those.
Any more questions, okay? If not, we'll move on to Ms. Barton.
Hello, everybody. Um, we are in the middle of kind of a lockdown right now. Um, we have had several that have signed up out of three quarters and contacts that we haven't moved. Um, we had very good attendance today, there were three that did not show up, um, but they were stuck, so they have been already rescheduled. Um, our last day is tomorrow, and we did it more like a half-assed, um, setup this year, just because of the COVID guidelines and that kind of thing, and, um, and actually we're finding we're getting more trust with that, um, just because teachers can have really good connections in front of us that are coming in, they have a little more extra time in terms of the kids that, that come in, um, and they don't feel so rushed, and there's not future reading, while they're trying to talk about the assessments that they do during the pandemic. So we have kind of talked a little bit about possibly doing something extra involving the preschools, the essence will be in the same room, um, and, um, just to learn about these sort of issues, so. The second thing is, is that we, um, but applied for PBIS cohort through that elementary school, which was applied, and we got accepted, so that's really exciting for us, so we will be able to, um, join the middle school with, um, the PBIS, um, and we have a first administration meeting, uh, and so then we'll have a running, we'll be able to.
Clarify PBIS, what that means.
Positive behavior intervention system.
Awesome. Do you have any questions?
No, any questions, I just would add, I, I really just participated in kindergarten level today, it was, I mean, it was a smooth process, and I was just impressed with our family and our board and our staff, so it was a really good experience, and I think if we can replicate that, I'd be happy to.
But we will, um, all of us going to go back together, it was very nice. We can kind of see the vision, keep a little bit further, and come up some conversations.
But it's also exciting to hear about the PBIS thing, because that allows a lot of strategic planning, we put together a, a base of creating a support tech system, so that's exciting.
Maybe that PBIS change will be better, so, that was part of the application process, so.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll move on to our morning.
Good evening. We have entered testing season. On Tuesday, the 30th, uh, we have 51 juniors and a few seniors taking the ACT. Uh, we are doing that at the Armory, so that we have enough room to space, and that they have a little bit of a special location to get away from the bells and the noise and things to take their assessment. MCA testing will start on April 20th, uh, that will be reading, and, uh, our schedule is a little bit different than in prior years. Fourth, fourth, and fifth grade will take their test over two days, April 20th and 21st. Tenth grade will take those on Tuesday, April 20th, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade will take those on Wednesday, April 21st. Just to divide and conquer, give them the space and time they need, um, and then math will be, uh, Tuesday, April 27th, and Wednesday, April 28th, so the week after, and the same thing goes, third, fourth, and fifth will take it over the two days, um, 11th grade will take those on the 27th, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth will take those on the 28th. And then we have science, and that's May 4th and 5th, and that only includes grades five and eight, and then our high physiology, which is the 11th graders, and so they will take those between those days on the 4th and the 5th as well. Other than that, just making sure everyone has what they need and they're in the system, and getting going with requisitions and things for staff members, so. We're also working on plodding summer schools still, um, getting a few more people signed up, ready to go to teach that, um, we have a plan for students to, um, for criteria, to meet, to be there, and getting the staff excited to be involved as well. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, we will move on to item number 10, discussion items, 10.1, for 2021, 2022 calendar options.
Um, if you want to take a look, we've got, uh, calendar one, which is a after Labor Day start, and there are two options, which we'll explain, and calendar two, which is a before Labor Day start, um, I don't know how much consideration you want to give to that, uh, we have looked at it, we're not getting a lot of support, uh, from staff or administration for that, so, um, and we don't have any construction needs, so we may just want to say we're not going to consider spending before Labor Day, um, but that does bring us back to calendar, uh, one A, and I just want to give you a brief highlight of that. Uh, this is a calendar that does not have, um, a different model for parent teacher conferences. Instead of the traditional two-week, uh, this has three-week dismissals, one each month. Uh, how, what we do is we do add a student day back into the calendar, uh, so there is 174 student days, um, which is kind of where we have been in the past. Uh, calendar one B is with more traditional parent teacher conferences, and one less three-week dismissal each month, and from where that's at. So, uh, the administrators have, um, worked with their staffs to come up with this concept, so, um, Mr. Strasser and Ms. Barton, I don't know if you want to kind of give an overview of what our thoughts are, or what your thoughts are, and where your staff, where your staff is at with these opportunities to parent teacher conferences.
Well, I will break it down in talking to my staff, and looking at, uh, what we see at the middle and high school, regardless of parent teacher conferences, the number that we get is typically under 30%. Knowing that we went in and looked at, how can we better communicate with our parents? And can we do that regularly, if we dedicate time on a weekly or bi-monthly basis? And that was the big emphasis for, I talked to Ms. Wallace specifically, uh, about professional development and PLC time, could we carve out some time where, uh, we can dedicate to setting up meetings, or having very little meetings, uh, with parents, uh, regarding their students throughout the year, instead of on four nights of the year, knowing that those nights don't always work for everybody, uh, to come in, and we know that, a lot of our community members don't like coming into the building, so I thought this was an appropriate way to try and encourage more communication. Uh, I feel like we do a good job of, uh, two to three week communication, but that's primarily email-based, and I want to move beyond email-based, and email-based communication, and if we're really about educating for kids, it's, it's part of the, the high school concept of professional learning plans. Well, what do parents know about professional learning plans for their high school student? That's a four-year process to get them from ninth grade to 12th grade, and this communication piece is a component of that, to be able to share that information out and keep students, or to keep parents informed on a more personal level. So, I, I guess that's the summary of what I'm thinking.
And, and we found this year, some of the tapaways or silver linings of having virtual conferences, especially at the elementary level, and middle school had a few, and high school had a few, our teachers felt they were able to. Our teachers felt they were able to communicate more clearly, more specifically with all their parents, rather than those who just showed up for conferences. So, when we look at the quality of communication versus the quantity, that four nights a year with conferences is a norm. However, the quality of that conversation about students' learning and what their needs are is not effective on four nights a year. Well, if we can do this, one, if we have the schedule 1A where there are three early dismissals, one of those early dismissals will be dedicated to parent communication. And if we feel that we need staff, and it's important for staff to communicate with parents, we need to provide them the time, and we also need to provide them with the training of how to communicate and what to communicate. So, I think when we took a look at everything that has happened this year and the impact that it has made with our teachers and our parents and our students, it's something that we feel we can take forward successfully.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, adding to that with the elementary staff, we all felt like, you know, during this time with those kinds of conferences, they were able to be a little more intentional, so they didn't have distractions. Because sometimes parents are not that kind of friends, and they could really hold hands on the student without any distractions, or let them talk about that, it was effective, it was efficient. I talked to my teachers. I heard that they were full time with something different, and think that this would be a great way to be a little more intentional. We do, we do, um, we saw a lot of communication already, and they also, we communicate with them already, and so they know you do, so this can be a little more intentional for those kiddos that we need to, you know, sit in touch with parents or get really kind of deep into what it is that we both want to do to help the students be successful. So, again, it just gives them that time to be able to do that.
And I'll add one more aspect. I've been working with the elementary leadership team over the past three months to complete a comprehensive needs assessment for our application for the school-wide Title I funding, which is a shift from, we had, we usually do targeted services, but school-wide provides support to all students, not just the bottom students. And in that discussion, family engagement has come up again and again when we are talking about reading proficiency, when we are talking about math proficiency, when we are talking about how to ensure that students have what they need. Well, if we can't help parents understand what their students' needs are, and maybe help provide them and teach them a strategy or two that they could try at home, then we have not exhausted all of our opportunities. So, parent engagement is one of the factors that CSA has greatly increased this year in grades K through four, and next year, fifth grade will use it as well. So, it's something that, when we look at our district strategic plan, we want parents to be involved, we want students to be involved, we want what is best for our students, all of our students, not just those who show up at conference night. So, I did conferences virtually, I thought that was good, it was good, using my time. I came to the middle school for conferences, and I felt like there wasn't a lot of, the forum, there was, it wasn't very, how do I say it? You came in, there wasn't anybody around, you know, it was very unorganized, I felt like. And so, I felt like as a parent, it wasn't very, looked at as something that was important by our school. So, I did have some concern. I mean, it just didn't feel like it was a welcoming, like, come in and come see your teacher type thing, which, you know, and a lot of the teachers were gone. So, I would say if it helps have more teachers become, or be in, you know, a talk with more parents, then I would be all for it. But I feel like it has to, you know, we have to figure something out, and we have to make it more of an important thing for both sides again, which I feel like it's kind of went along the wrong side. So, my one concern about having three early dismissals a month, is that a concern for people with younger kids at home? Because are you either having to find daycare for them, or are you having to, you know, come home from work three days, or three days each month to take care of them? And that would be my only concern about having that many early dismissals.
Is there a plan to track as far as the effectiveness of this, or making sure that teachers are following through with actually providing the communication, is there a plan for that?
Yes. Of course, there's a plan. We have staff right now, staff communicate at the middle school through the crowd, and they list which parents, how many parents attended on which nights. We are thinking that we could use our student information system and make notes within there on when they attended, when the parents, or when they called, when they communicated, how they communicated, so that we can also access that and give a poll and see and check and monitor.
We don't have to survey the parents after?
Oh, goodness, yes. We would like to do, you and I had discussed this at one of our calendar meetings, but yes, of course, having surveys to gauge effectiveness and areas for improvement. Yes. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Do you have any questions?
Are there other schools that you're aware of that are currently doing this?
That currently do virtual conferences like this, or that do more early outs?
The early outs that I used to?
Marshall Public Schools do an early out every Wednesday. That is their practice and has been for a good 15, if not 20, years. And it's, they're built in PD time, it is their, it's just the norm in their community. And, you know, I know I can't say that we're just like Marshall, but our teachers and our students have the same needs as the teachers and students in Marshall as well.
I feel like that would make more sense for here as well. I mean, okay, so, okay, is it this Wednesday or next Wednesday that they have early out? Or is it the following Wednesday? I can't keep track. I mean, you know what I mean? If it was every Wednesday, you know, you have a plan in place, instead of jumping, okay, we have two weeks early out, two weeks not. I think it's just better off if you just do every Wednesday and just be done with it. That way, everyone knows what's going on. I mean, as a parent, that, it's better for me, especially with people with younger kids. They have a plan worked out, they know where their kids are going. Maybe the churches can be involved, and they can have, like, faith formation or religion right after school, so they're home by 5:00. You know what I mean? I think that's something to look into. If we're going to do that, let's just do it every Wednesday. But, I mean, I don't feel like there's, there's 23 early outs on 1A and 13 without. I mean, I'd just say, let's do it every Wednesday.
Do it every Wednesday, how would that affect days?
They're all still here, the days. I mean, right? If an early out, that's considered a day, right?
Yeah.
As a parent, I say every Wednesday.
And I want to comment to people who said that, too, that they're doing it.
Yeah, because then you know them.
Yep.
Well, we're not making any decisions. We, this is the first week, so we won't make a decision next day, so.
Doesn't make sense.
I don't know which one, so.
I know.
People need scheduling. How do you, people?
Okay, we'll look for more information at next month's parent recognition, and we'll go from there. Okay, we'll move on to item number 11, Board Action. 11 dot one, Retirement Letter from Pam Cruz, Brown Elementary Music Teacher. She has dedicated 36 years of her time to serving the Hudson area students, so we want to thank her. From Tony, do you have anything to share?
Yeah. She's so passionate about music, and just, and learning, and doing, listening to concerts, and, um, just watching her concerts, and watching her concerts, and watching her work, and, um, it isn't hard to see them for her. But she's set ready, and it's time to know the next chapter in her life, and she's excited that it's a little still on, too. So, but we're so, we're so blessed to have her, to have her as a teacher. I'm so glad we have her to develop.
Awesome. Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the Retirement Letter from Pam Cruz? Someone, second. Chrissy and Brad, do you discuss? Here in one, are those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion pause. Moving on to 11 point two, the Second Review of Policy 504, Student Dress and Appearance. That was on the agenda last month. They think we discussed it becoming more of a central decision to the individual schools and affect policy.
That was, that was the whole point. We still have the authority through the discipline policy to manage student dress. It just, that can be done, it's central, it's kind of not in the bottom of control. So, whether they want, do they want to have this specific? So, one can scrap the whole policy, part of it is they had, they did, but we can do nothing, so.
Do you have a motion to approve the Second Review of Policy 504, Student Dress and Appearance?
Somebody.
Second. Second. Chrissy and Brad, do you discuss? Here in one, are those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion pause. Moving on to 11 dot three, Approved Recommendation of Senior's Last Day of School. So, Mr. Strasser had mentioned this, the day is May 11. Do you have a motion to approve May 11 as senior's last day of school? So moved. Brad?
Second.
Chris? Do you discuss? Are there's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion pause. 11 point four, Approved Disposal of Absolvent Furniture.
We move on to things right in our schedule. We do this, they never get reused, so if anybody will, Cal said, I gotta like, I gotta get some space, so. I said, well, get out of here, what we haven't used in 10 years, so this is stuff that we just sit out here and recommend, uh, if we will post it, usually it would be for 30 days. If anybody wants to make an op-ed, anything, they can tell me, we have a faculty that can just take care of it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of obsolete furniture. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you, uh, do you discuss? Are there's in favor, disposal of obsolete furniture, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion pause. Moving on to 11 point five, Approved 2021-2022 Contracts with SMWC Service Cooperative.
A senior's co-op contract depend for a variety of services from technology support to special education. This year, the contract is increasing, I believe about $40,000, but it is a significant chunk, but it's about $848,000 with our contract with the co-op. So, recommend approving, we do this every year, and everything is in order.
Do you have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Contracts with SMWC Service Cooperative? Somebody. Lawrence, do you have a second?
Second.
Chrissy, do you discuss? Are there's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Are there's in extension, say aye?
Aye.
Motion pause. Which is more? Uh, moving on to 11 point six, Resolution Allowing to Determination and Nonrenewal of Teaching Contract with a Provisionary Teacher.
Therefore, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 2689 pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 122.8.4.0 subdivision 5, Teaching Contract with Michael Tyson, Provisionary Teacher employed by ISD 2689 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2020-2021 school year and not renewed for the 2021-2022 school year. Be approved and resolved with a written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and nonrenewal of the contract as provided by law. The board is reviewed and hereby approves the letter to be sent to the teacher.
Do you have a motion to approve the resolution?
Somebody.
Somebody.
Brad? Katie, second. This is a vote call vote. We will start with. Katie?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Lawrence?
Aye.
Chrissy?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Moving on to 11 point seven, Resolution Allowing to Determination of Nonrenewal of Teaching Contract with a Provisionary Teacher.
Therefore, be resolved, School Board of Independent School District 2689, Pipestone, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 122.8.4.0 subdivision 5, The Teaching Contract with Michael Tyson, Provisionary Teacher employed by ISD 2689 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2020-21 school year and not renewed for the 2021-22 school year. Be approved and resolved with a written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and nonrenewal of the contract as provided by law. The board is reviewed and hereby approves the letter to be sent to that teacher.
Do you have a motion to approve the resolution?
Somebody.
Brad?
Somebody.
Lawrence, second. This is a vendor vote call vote. We start with Katie?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Lawrence?
Aye.
Chrissy?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pauses. And moving on to 11 point eight, Approved Critical and Teaching Learning Contract for Melanie Monets. This was a postponement from the last board meeting, and I'm looking for a motion to approve. And Lawrence?
Second.
Katie, second? Do you discuss? Are there's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion pause. 11 point nine, Approved Principles Contract for Pam Strasser and Pam Barton. Again, we used the postponement from last month's board meeting, and I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Somebody.
Lawrence?
Somebody.
Uh, you? Do you discuss? Are there's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion pause. Um, moving on to 11 point one zero, Approved Admin Budget Recommendations.
The admin team puts together the education program, the maintenance, and other various portions of the budget. This year, we are looking to, and we were trying to stay as budget neutral as we could. But overall, basically, we are looking to add an elementary librarian, and art teaching positions for the new elementary. This will be done through FTE alignment. We would like to increase the technology card to a technology assistant. This means that they would work all year long. We actually had this in the past. And Mr. Dunick to the HR position, we kind of replaced a little apparel, but we're just kind of bringing it back up again. We would like to return the one FTE instructional coach. This position was not replaced due to late resignation last summer, and so we will be filling that also. There's also a number of tech upgrades and improvements, some maintenance projects, capital improvement needs, and also the site allocations. The Budget Finance Committee reviewed this and has given their stamp of approval, and like I said, it stays fairly budget neutral with all those things. So, I recommend approval of the admin budget grants.
I'll make a motion to approve admin budget recommendations.
Second.
Brad? Do you discuss? Here in one? Are there's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion pause. Moving on to item 11, point one one, Members Community Library Discussion. If anyone remembers, on December 9, 2020, the school district sent a letter to each library board member informing them of our position in regards to the 1993 library board member informing them of our position in regards to the 1992 agreement we have with them to share our library. Our position is that the agreement is not being followed, and the school district feels it is obligated to abide by its terms. The library board has sought its own legal agreement with the city and does not agree with our position. As a school district, we cannot have differing views on what our agreement's made therefore. I make a motion to acquiesce, ratify, lose, or delay to move in action to declare the rights magnifications of the parties to the joint college agreement regarding the library and to seek appropriate relief. Do you have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? Any one will proceed to vote. Are there's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion pause. Moving on to item number 12, agreement. Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Katie? And Chrissy? Are there's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there's opposed, say no? Motion passes. Any agenda?